All right. Let's start tonight. Welcome to the Council of May 10. We appreciate you being here tonight. We have a legislative meeting starting by councilor.
We have to meet the legislative leaders.
I am the president of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The fathers who come before me at this time, we're deeply grateful for the opportunity we have to live in this city. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve. We're grateful for the wonderful people who live here and support the community. We ask you to guide the, uh, guide the areas of the city as we deliberate, talk about, vote upon things that are pertinent to the progress and the things that need to happen here in Harrisville. I ask our spirit to be with us as we do so. And we say they say do so in the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you, Matt.
Max works.
All right, moving on to our consensus. Before you want to enter, I'm going to explain something to council, just so you're aware. Back to May 4th, 2022, this is by our attention HB 0439, which is under effect. And one of the things it says is essentially that everything that we're doing will have to be a roll call vote. They need to have every member's vote. So when we go through all this tonight, it'll be a roll call vote on everything. So you're aware, and some of you with long names, that's council member. It'll be fun. I just want to make you aware. See, yeah, awful, maybe.
They expect to make it out of it.
All right, so moving on, so good size. Item A is approved minutes of April 12th, 2022, and April 19th is presented. Does council have an opportunity to look at those minutes? Anything you want to discuss or change? Not may have a motion.
Almost approved minutes of April 12th, 2022, and April 19th, 2022.
Okay, that's a motion and a second. So councillor Willand.
Yes.
Councillor Jackson.
Yes.
Councillor Christensen.
Yes.
Councillor Weiss.
Yes.
Councillor Willard.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item number B. So we have had, uh, the last couple of months, I think you've been aware that we have needed a new city reporter. And we have gone through a process of advertising and gone through quite a few interviews and we have, uh, offered the job to Maria Deveraux. Hi, and she's here tonight. Maria, would you like to come up here and just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Oh, I'd love that. Council members, mayor, my pleasure to be here truly. My name is Maria Deveraux. I've had years of experience and I love the public process, so I'm exactly where I'd like to be. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
You're welcome. And why don't you just stay up here because we're going to administer the office of your Oh, yes. Board of office to you. But I have, that's right. I always do that one step ahead. I need to have you ratify my decision to hire her. Yeah, I need a motion.
I'd make a motion to ratify mayor's appointments in the report system. Second.
All right, got motion and a second. Councillor Willard.
Yes.
Councillor Jackson. Christensen.
Yes.
Councillor Weiss.
Yes.
Councillor Willard.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, thank you for standing there. And we'll have, uh, do you want to any of this little office?
You have to be, raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend, that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, the consti- the Constitution of the state of Utah, the Constitution of the state of Utah, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Thank you for the words.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you. We're really excited after here. Her first day was yesterday and we're, I think she's been sitting right in. We're really glad. Welcome. Okay, moving on to item number five, business items. Discussion possible action to grant preliminary approval of Ben Lomond's Phase 2 subdivision application. Justin, would you like to take this?
As you know, we've been diligently working through with the developers of the Ben Lomond Golf Course, Mr. Player and his team. We're at that plat- plat- place for preliminary subdivision approval. Matt Roberts, an actual city engineer, has gone through and addressed notes that they'll take the next month or so to clean up and fix before we come back to final. But we are at that stage that we are ready with a positive recommendation from the planning commission to move forward with preliminary acceptance for this subdivision.
I'm sorry, Matt.
No, I said we had a positive recommendation. Sorry, last month, yes, we did get a positive recommendation.
You know, I threw that, Justin, like, well, before this, there's 31 things that that, yeah. So those will all be taken care of.
Those will all be taken care of before it goes to final for planning commission and then back to you guys for final, final. And then we'll hold the pre-con and get to work.
The only one thing that I don't see on here that has been brought up last, the council meetings three times, is the water flow that's through that area and make sure that it's not being rerouted or we have homes being put on places that are still.
That has 100% been addressed through Matt's notes on the actual plant itself.
I can see it.
There's some notes on the plant. And we reached out to Brad Gable, who's on the Zoom call and very well knows he's the engineer for the development, that that is an issue we need to resolve.
So that fine print in the red right there is that what you're.
There's some notes that. Very much that ditch looks script of these, but it will not go away. It may be piped in, but it won't go away. So we'll be water flowing through it.
I understand that, but understand the concerns and wants citizens together and the backup.
Any other question? Anything else, Justin, that we should be aware of?
We're just trying to get these last few things cleaned up and get UDOT's access permits and hopefully be able to start moving dirt by the end of July, first of August, if all goes well.
All right, council, ready for a motion?
Okay, I vote we grant preliminary approval of Ben Lomond's phase 2 subdivision. Also.
Okay, now a motion and a second. Roll call. Okay, want to do subject to the engineers now? No more?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay. So that's the, the motion, second, could that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, councillor Willand.
Yes.
Councillor Jackson.
Yes.
Councillor Christensen.
Yes.
Councillor Weiss.
Yes.
Councillor Willard.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item B, discussion possible action to adopt Harrisville ordinance 523, which is the Dixon Creek Park zoning map amendment, master development agreement. Jenny.
So you're all familiar with the Dixon Creek project. We've also been calling this the Washington Boulevard project. But this is the formal adoption of the zoning change in conjunction with the master development agreement for the project. So there is a, there are a few changes I'd like to point out in the development agreement that were added to, they were part of the packet that you received. The first portion is the four units identified in the current floodplain. And we adopted this exactly the same way we did with Ben Lomond's use, that those will be in an excluded development area. And the, it is the intention of the city and also the developer for them to mitigate the floodplain and remove those, but they won't be built until they are mitigated and they are part of the final phase five of the development. That gives them time to address those issues before they are developed. There is also a timeframe that was included in this section, in the development agreement, that they will put in residential structure within 36 months. And there will begin the commercial development six months after we vacate the public works building, as you're all aware, that we did sell the, the public works building to align the road with Lockwood in Ogden City. And just a follow-up, Justin and I participated in a UDOT meeting with UDOT about that light being installed yesterday regarding that. So UDOT is aware towards that location for the stoplight on Washington Boulevard. Are there any questions that you have?
Just a couple. When I was looking at that, I noticed something, 1500 goes all the way from Washington Boulevard into, into our, the back of our subdivision on 200 East. One time it was talked about being jaded. I don't know if that still is considered or now asked to be over. Because it certainly impacts our subdivision as far as many, all the traffic that probably in our, our subdivision itself.
Yes, so then the.
I'm not understanding, and I have not told the developers what was happening to that development.
So the initial first map that we might have seen had a connection. Let me, sorry, let me share screen for, have a reason to just make sure we include that. There was, there have been some road changes and new road alignments. The initial road on the south part of the, the development was a private road, I believe, when they first proposed it. And they had increased that to a full public right-of-way through the, the development, which makes better sense for the infrastructure to be put inside the public roadway, but also that the access that is being utilized through the subdivision is for public use. So there will not be a gate on that.
Which increases, which now increases.
It will increase the traffic access to.
Is there how many units from there?
So that would be under the assumption that all of these people are traveling west. The higher likelihood is that they would be traveling east to Washington Boulevard. But yes, the potential exists that there would be some additional traffic to the west.
Knowing what's happening in our subdivision, when we open the look there, that's increased in traffic down there. I said it literally, just as I understand, because I listen too. So I assume the same thing will happen, because that becomes a major argument now. To get out, where you don't have to cross Washington, my, my, I can miss some things, it's two thirds of people live there, will be to the back road, going to Lockwood. Just because I know that's going to reduce traffic and I can see a lot of same parents and children. Not what I'm saying, I'm just saying the green has been up because they are in the surface.
Is there, there will be avenues, a stubbed road, so it always indicated that there would be a connection made to the, that connection is being made now.
So UDOT was pretty adamant with the density of, 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 was, was more a light.
So the light will actually be at the, the north entrance here, where our current public works.
Right.
Yes, they did, or they, the original map years ago showed the light on Washington Boulevard in our traffic plan for being at 1100 north, which, yes, didn't make sense. It's too close in proximity to Larson Lane and the traffic on Larson Lane far outweighs the traffic on 1100 north. So they knew they were going to put another second light in between 1700 and Larson Lane. And they met with us, we met with North Arcton, was also involved in the conversation. And it's all indications from that meeting yesterday indicate that the light structure's going to be put in at Lockwood and it would connect in to where our current public works building sits, the intersection. There are further discussion about the south entrance, but not necessarily on that call, but we have a staff where the most of the traffic for the development goes, but the cross street, across the street in Ogden is actually the retirement center, so it doesn't align with another Ogden road. So it makes more sense to have it at that north location.
This then brings up the other concern, the best with lights going, there is a potential of the road up towards the outer north lining into that one, which now makes that a major intersection with a light that people will now use. So, you know, I know that's a future side, but I am concerned about that, because now you have two, you know, avenues coming back into the subdivision. And we all knew about this, what was going on with our subdivision's development and all the trucks that went up and down, that's like an avenue.
Yes. With, with future growth, we deal with the, the traffic connectivity and that possibility does exist, that that road would connect into, to the 14, 25 or 1400 north. 1400. And so that, yes, and North Ogden has plans for 150 east to connect down as well.
And then we're going that way too.
So there would, there would be traffic access through that eventually, when those, and obviously the developments are private property driven, so when those property owners decide to sell, when those conversations take place.
How many units?
This is, I don't have a square footage necessarily on there. There are 215 units included in this, with four of them being in the floodplain. Because after that's mitigated, then that would be a total of 215, I believe, the, excuse me, the preliminary site plan only includes 214 units. They, they lost one unit with some of the mapping there, so the number will be, the maximum number included in the map, the master development agreement is 215 units.
On the document itself, the date was 2021 instead of 2022.
I corrected those, mayor. Thank you for pointing that out. I corrected those today.
Perfect.
I updated all that you got into the city right now, but that's to reflect 2022. And assuming it's approved, we'll send the documents with the development team to collect the appropriate signatures before the city signs the verdict.
I have a question. It goes with this, and with the golf course. So when they mitigate that, that goes with the core engineers. Is that who approves the final approval?
The army corps of engineers is, they're only involved in the wetlands.
Right.
The floodplain mitigation is done through FEMA.
Okay.
So two totally different agencies.
Okay.
Um, the floodplain is a FEMA issue. And the wetlands will be army corps of engineers. There are some wetlands on this being, some being mitigated and some being turned over to incorporate into the, the city park.
So FEMA will come in there.
FEMA, they, they've already started their studies with FEMA through CRS engineering and some other engineering firms. They're starting to do their study with, with the property with those surveyors and they collected a lot of data and putting that all together.
Thank you.
I guess the only concern is the buffer zone. I realize where the park is, but a lot of the younger parkers further south, with the buffer zone between, back, you know, the homes to the water. Versus that, and I, I was trying to find it here. So obviously where public recreation is, there's big buffer zone there, but that area up in the north end, so there should wipe off the sound there.
So they're showing, they're calling out some landscaping and there is a gap, what the distance is on that. We don't get into the site plan detail necessarily to that distance of the stage, but it does show on their plan that there is a type of landscaping buffer in between. There is a gap there. There is some landscaping anticipated to be in that, that area that's showing on this plan.
I know there's a ditch that those guys are better.
I don't know that.
I now realize that I've asked the detail questions.
Yeah. So we don't have, because we're not the engineering phase yet with this. This is just the zoning change, right?
Yeah.
But yes, I mean, whatever water issues will be, they will all be addressed and mitigated through the engineering when it comes to that fact.
I know that when this procedure first suggested, there was a lot of arms to say, no, we've got two, two and three story buildings looking down into our homes. And that's the reason I asked what the, what is the buffer distance on the south?
So what is showing here is there is the landscaping buffer. There is a small area before the homes. These salmon colored units are two story, the three story are closer Washington Boulevard. They pushed all of those over from here.
I do this because, yes, I'm trying to understand what's, but I'm, you know.
Need to not understand my.
I've asked all the questions that you're supposed to all be answering.
Do you have any more questions, Robert?
Oh, I'm sure I've got it, not right now. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, either Jenny or Justin? Not, I have a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Harrisville ordinance 523 Dixon Creek Park zoning map amendment, master development agreement.
I click, I don't think. So I understand this, the amendment was for what? Commercial, I haven't ever talked about this.
The amendment was, this is different than the first original thing we got. Because I understand, right? So this is just a little bit different. We're amending the plant and this is the plan for. Yes, it's on me.
Okay.
Okay, did you finish your?
Yep.
Okay, and your second? Okay. All right, motion and a second. Councillor Willand?
Yes.
Councillor Jackson?
Yes.
Councillor Christensen?
Yes.
Councillor Weiss?
Yes.
Councillor Willard?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Right, item number C, this is discussion or possible action to adopt fiscal year 2023 tentative budgets instead of appearing for June 14th, 2022. Jessica, would you like to come forward and give us?
Sure. I don't know what detail you want me to go into, but I prepared the budget memo you should have already received in your packet. I just wanted to highlight the general fund. I, we are presenting a balanced budget with the intent that we hold a TNT, a truth and taxation. Based on the certified tax rate, I went back to 2010, just to kind of give you some history. In 2010, it was point 00619 and we adopted point 000660. You blasted your property tax increase in 2013 to a point 001292. So the budget that I, the staff is presenting to you is adopting a certified tax rate of a 0.00952. But that is assuming that we are going to use almost $80,000 in fund balance in the general fund. So in order to not use fund balance and to keep the budget whole, you with, using our property tax, we would need to increase that to a point 001150 rate. So it's not quite as high as we did in 2013, but that would adjust us kind of back to where we should be with our certified tax rate. It would increase our resident up to $91 a year, which is equivalent to $7.60 a month, and a commercial $442, which is 36.83 a month. So that's what staff is proposing, is that we move to the point 001150. Included in the tentative budget, sales tax, we were just very conservative based on what we had collected since through April of 2022 and historical for the last three years, we put that at 1.8 million dollars. Again, it's very conservative. It, it will fluctuate depending on what interest rates do, as well as spending for our consumers. Personnel, it is included a 3% cost of living for all full-time employees. And of course, with COLA or increases, that you have the, put the bill by Medicare, as well as retirement and anything associated with the increase. We did go, we did get a new broker for insurance. It was through GBS. I was excited when the increase to the health premiums were only 5.5% because another place I'm associated with, it was over a 30% increase. So the 5.5 was amazing. That's pretty consistent with what's happened throughout the state on health insurance premiums. URS remains stable. There are no increases on retirement. We are proposing one new patrol officer, a general maintenance worker in public works, and a new full-time position in parks and rec. So that is included in the tentative budget. We also created a new roads department. So in public works, it had roads and all of maintenance in one. We split that out into just public works and maintenance and a roads division. Roads will be funded by BNC road funds and transportation. So there was no financial impact. The funds were still there. We are requesting the purchase of a mini excavator using those BNC road funds, so that is included in the tentative budget. The motor pool, we increased for two patrol officer vehicles. And the police department's motor vehicle allocation to the motor pool has been adjusted for that increase. Sewer fund, that's, they're all pretty stable. We did increase a new revenue source from Central Weaver Sewer. That was added. And we broke out what Harrisville City charges versus what Central Weaver Sewer. Garbage fund, that one has been operating in the deficit for several years. In researching the rates that we charge for a first can, it's 1570. We are proposing the increase 80 cents, which is a 5% increase to 1650 a can. So you can see what our proposed rates are, that will bring us our, our garbage fund up to where we are operating in, where we should be without a deficit. And then in debt service, we created transfers from the enterprise funds and the general fund into the debt service, which is where we'll house the debt service payments for the 750 West project. The transfers will transfer from the funds into here and then we will make the bond payment and transfer from Fund 73, which is our debt service fund, into the capital to build that facility. So do you have any questions specifically for me that I can help answer? I know it was just brief. I'm not sure what else you would like me to see? Is there anything you'd like me to prepare to help you make a decision on the certified tax rate in June and to adopt the tentative budget?
Is the certified tax rate something we have been keeping up with?
Yes.
For the last.
Since 2019.
Still a long time.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
And so now we're going to fix that.
Yeah, so we're going to get it back to where we were almost in 2013. So if you maintain your rates every year, what happens is when home values increase, your rate decreases. So you get this swing, right? So if you don't maintain your rate, your rate goes down and you lose out on that money of property tax. So if you maintain your rate, you're keeping your rate the same as prices, values go up, then you collect more money.
That's a yearly thing we can just, this is my first time through this, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, you'll have to do a truth and taxation every year just to maintain that rate, but if you maintain it, it's better than going back and having a huge increase to your residents.
Okay, thank you. I like that.
It still means that residents pay.
It does, but instead of getting a $90 increase, they would get a $5 increase. So keep that in mind. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Just find it's interesting that we're in twenty twenty-one, our certified tax rate is less than when it was in twenty twelve, when we thought that the neighbors. But it has dropped down that well.
How does that compare with our neighboring cities?
I have not looked at that. But that's a question I can bring that back.
I'm guessing it's still lower, but I'd like to see the figures.
Okay. The last I looked at that, it's been a while, but we were in the county, we were like second or third from the bottom.
So you're missing out on your share, but I miss how it works.
We'd be, Jay, we would be surplusing out how many police vehicles?
Two. Well, surplus two. I'm going to keep my vehicle for another year. So instead of getting three this year, we'll just get the two and surplus two.
And are we? Are we getting with that? Sure, that now, we did, uh, go to the auction company. How are we doing now selling that, right?
We tried that with the tracks. It didn't work out very well, so they could go to the auction.
Okay.
I think they get more exposure down there. We are paying a ten percent fee, but I think with the amount of people that are bringing in there, we're probably pretty even enough to deal with that. Test drive, insurance issues and all the other stuff.
With the extra, what will that put us at? Hello.
We've determined, as we've gone through this budget process, and we've found with all the department heads, that with the increase, we have nine submissions that are coming in. Increase of the populace, our community, that we have got to stay ahead of the game. Catch up for some on. You can see here, like catch-ups for some, but we can't do that anymore. We got it.
Just to give you an idea, the state average officer per thousand, one point seven five. We were always in places like Riverdale that have retail businesses and a smaller population. They were relevant. Two point four officers. And we were always operating about one point six five. Like recalls to Walmart. This, this, this in line, hopefully, this state average.
And their highest credit rating in the counties.
Isn't that interesting?
Five part one crimes to thousands, but they, the FBI ages and they're all really bad ones and that their staff. And the slightest retail theft in Walmart counts as one of those. And so it makes us and Riverdale look like we're more crime ridden than ours. It's a policy, but it's a reality.
I don't want. So I'd just like to comment to our garbage fund. You conducted recently a staff garbage audit, and we're still in that process of assessing how many cans are in the city to make sure that we are paid appropriately leave for those parents and charging the residency appropriate amounts for their cans. So that audit is being conducted in conjunction with the assessment of where our rates are and what the proposed rate. So with adoption of the tentative budget and potentially adopting this proposed increase will bring a resolution in GMP that will align those garbage services with the appropriate funds for the residents there. And we've also done the same in the sewer fund. The Central Weaver Sewer fees have increased. We've recently broken that out on the bills so that the residents understand how much of their sewer is being paid to Central Weaver Sewer and how much is being paid as the sewer utility fee. And we will align those appropriately as well, so this city is not covering the cost that we have to pay for our sewer treatment to Central Weaver Sewer. Additional details to those items.
Jessica, you said by the garbage fund, that'll make us, so we're not supplementing the citizens, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We, uh, we're in our contract.
Just renegotiated in twenty twenty, I believe. So we're within a five-year contract of that. I believe it was twenty twenty, I can double check. Raise, did raise the rate when we renegotiated that at that time, but possibly not enough?
Yeah. That's fine. One of the question, with the people that are proposing to hire people here. Public Works. Your preparation, is that going to help you as far as coming to things that you need? As far as people, I know it's going to help where are we involved, especially when we're looking at.
In the long run, for public works, total build out with having our own cleaning equipment, sewer and so on and so forth. Total popular, total grow out would be around, oh, twelve to fifteen in public works personnel. This will put us at six. Granted, we're still waiting for more grow out. The nice thing, and I worked very diligently with Jessica this year in the budget, is we are making it so the sewer and the stormwater fund pay for the majority of their staff, pay for all their staff and any other fees that come in, travel and training. Their benefits, all that. So the, the actual money is coming from those utility fees. It's not coming out of the general fund and tax money. It's coming out of the utility funds. So that really helps the public works to stay, you know, as a positive footprint in our general fund.
How about for you, Brett?
Uh, I think, Brett, one right now will help us sustain what we have. I think with Washington Boulevard and seven fifty, I would certainly look at one more in the next two to three years. Yeah, one to two more.
Thank you.
On this garbage increase, have you taken into consideration, you said we're going to leave and we're not going to be so. But with diesel fuel costs going up, they're going to come back to the just for it. Because it's going up. It's not going down. Cancel is going up and it's staying up.
It does do a little bit of a cushion, because I wanted to project that for the same thing for the surprises.
All right. Are we, are we, do we still have our own fuel tanks? Do I, do I see us filling something up?
So we do have our own fuel tanks as far as there's the fifteen hundred gallon and just regular gas. At public works, five hundred of diesel. But due to the cost of them transporting it in, it actually ends up being a little bit cheaper to use our fuel cards on the drive around vehicles.
There's something that over there for emergencies.
Yes, we do keep a port emergencies right now. They're, they're over half on the diesel and over three quarters on the gas. So they are pretty full and bought at a cheaper rate previously when we go to retail.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jessica. That's a lot of hard work. Thank you all the department heads. This has been an ongoing project for about three or four months. I'm excited. We're at this point. All right. Can I have a motion, Council?
I'd make a motion to set a public hearing for June fourteenth, twenty twenty, students, for purposes of amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget. I'm sorry. Yeah. Oh, we're on C.
Yes.
I am sorry.
Okay.
To adopt the twenty twenty-three candidate budget and set a public hearing for June fourteenth, twenty twenty. Okay.
All right. A motion accepted. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to item D. This is discussion of possible action to set a public hearing for June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, for purposes of amending that fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget. In accordance with Utah code. Jessica, if you want to address this for us.
Would you want me to say? Explain why we just would need it. Okay, based on state statute, you can reopen your budget twice a year. This would be the end of FY twenty-two. We had a brief discussion this afternoon about our expenditures and where we are year to date. And I am not forecasting that we would need to reopen the budget to realign the money so the departments don't go over, like all of public works, there, his department can't go over. He might go over in office supplies or personnel, but as long as his total budget doesn't go over, then we don't have to reopen the budget. So this would be just to get us through the end of May, and then we would reevaluate. And if we needed to reopen that budget, this would give us the opportunity to do so. Did that answer it?
I'd like everybody to be sound, though.
Yes, we're in really good shape. I'm pretty proud. I'm pretty pleased in looking at the financials. Yeah, I think we're doing really well this year. The ARPA funds have helped, but I think we'll probably slower spending just so we can finish out the fiscal year and get the ball rolling on close out for our audit.
When is the budget year end?
June thirtieth. Goes July first to June thirtieth.
Okay.
Thank you, Jessica. Any more questions in the discussion council? All right, a motion, please.
Motion, please. Let's see. Set a public, set a public hearing for June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, for purposes of amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget in accordance with UCA, through the lines ten dash six dash one twenty-seven.
I have a motion in a second. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E. This is discussion of possible action to adopt Harrisville Resolution twenty-two dash oh eight. This is a resolution entering an interlocal agreement for transportation funding for West Harrisville Road. Jen? So most of you are aware that we've been applying for funding to widen West Harrisville Road. We've been slated for the funding in the year twenty twenty-four. And so this is a resolution adopting an interlocal agreement for, excuse me, the local transportation funding agreement with WECO. They are going to be providing the funds for the widening the, correct me if I'm wrong, but the west side of the road.
Yes.
Down to the four-way stop. So this agreement will allocate those funds from WECO for the project year of twenty twenty-four for us to do that widening project.
We don't care from the tracks. It doesn't say twelve hundred to one thousand.
Twelve hundred all the way to the tracks. That, well, so the there's little portions that are missing curb and gutter down between twelve hundred and one thousand. So that will be put in, but then the concept of milling the entire road, repaving it, re-striding it with three lanes and a possible bike lane. That's all going to go from twelve hundred to the tracks. And then with federal funds that we have allocated coming in from the state, we're doing the east side of the tracks also. With the widening and opening up that road. The same time. So we'll, we'll, there'll be two different projects, but we're trying to get it aligned out that that'll be the same contractor on board. Similar to how we kind of had to do most of the way with the different funding mechanism.
So it's not, it's just tracks for us?
Yes, just WECO.
We're just going through the resolution. I should mention as well, all of these agreements have gone through our city attorney for the flash prize approval before. Any more questions? A motion, please.
Make a motion to to adopt Harrisville Resolution twenty-two, basically, resolution entering interlocal agreement for transportation funding for my service.
One second.
A motion in a second. Roll call, uh, Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F. Discussion of Possible Action to Adopt Harrisville Resolution twenty-two dash oh nine. This is a resolution entering the interlocal agreement for security cameras. So the legislature adopted new regulations regarding unattended ballot drop boxes. And they reached out to cities asking who had camera systems in place, and we did not. They are offering funding for those cities that do not have them in place. But fortunately, a few years ago, when we upgraded our camera system, we included this on our, so we do have cameras. So our ballot box is under twenty-four hour surveillance, and we meet the requirements for retention as well. And this is adopting our, the use of our security cameras to monitor the drop box that's in our parking lot for the elections. Basically, that's, that's all. So when I was reading that question, it's providing funding for those that don't have it. That funding is only available for those cities that need to update their current, we are already in that situation. We already have one in place. Any other questions? Yeah. If not, a motion, please.
I hope that we adopt Harrisville Resolution twenty-two dash zero nine, entering into the local, interlocal agreement for camera use, security camera here.
Motion in a second. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Item G. This is the discussion of possible action to adopt Harrisville Resolution twenty-two dash ten, which is holiday leave policy amendments. Jenny? So the main purpose of this that was brought to staff's attention is the recognition on the federal and state platforms of Juneteenth, June nineteenth, is a federal and state recognized holiday. So we have, we are proposing the adoption of Juneteenth as a city recognized holiday for, for our staff members and also to, to recognize that. And we've also amended the Christmas holiday for staff the last two years. You know, in recognition, this was implemented as an advantage or a perk for our employees that we closed the city and recognize December twenty-fifth through January first as holidays for our staff members. So that's the, both of those items are included in this resolution. Any questions for staff or for staff?
I forgot what's, so you have a few guarantees.
So it's, it's the ending of slavery. Lincoln signed into the Emancipation Proclamation, proclamation, but it took a couple of years to reach Texas, and in Texas, there's a big celebration. And Juneteenth is the date. It's the recognition of that date, wanted for it. So if my saying was right, this is what I understand. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, it's a national, it's a federal holiday. It's here last year, and we've chosen, if you guys are okay with it, we've chosen to follow the state and the.
So the Christmas holiday till January first will be paid?
We've done that last.
Yes.
So just make it official as a holiday?
Twenty-fourth, right?
Yes, I just.
Yes, I just, I literally just add another, another holiday schedule. Is that 13? Is it 12, or is that what we?
Well, the 24th is the holiday, state holiday we're celebrating, the rest are all federal holidays.
With exception to the Christmas holiday.
I don't know if they're a bit in there, so how are we, for our police officers, because they can't like?
This is a big discussion.
So what are we doing for this?
So if they work, it'll be less like a holiday day, just like any other holiday. If they work that day, they'll get the holiday and the holiday day. So that was the first way we could come up with, with the thing that worked across the whole city that.
And I'm assuming the same public courts get some flowers.
Yeah.
That's fair.
Yeah, we tried to make it as fair as possible.
That's why we actually included it as a holiday, because it makes it cleaner, so there isn't any preferential treatment from the departments. It's right in front of the city holiday.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion.
Motion to adopt Harrisville Resolution 22 dash 10, holiday leave policy amendments. Certainly.
Motion and a second, Councilor Loveland.
Yes.
Councilor Jackson.
Yes.
Councilor Christensen.
Yes.
Councilor Weiss.
Yes.
Councilor Holmes.
Yes.
Thank you. We have a lot of resolutions tonight, we're going to have a special possible action to adopt Harrisville Resolution 22 dash 11, which is a resolution entering agreement of science, public finance, municipal bond services.
So I'm actually excited to bring back Marcus Keller from Science Bank, he's with us tonight. So he has amended his presentation around about two months ago. And he and I met last week for quite a while, and we've got an update on some of the bonding options that are going to be recommended. And the agreement to be cleared, the agreement is for the support from Science Bank to give us the, the guidance that they're currently giving us. That's, the bonding actually won't be voted upon tonight, but the agreement will be in that resolution. So I'll give Marcus that opportunity to come up and I'll kind of man his slideshow while we have a little discussion here.
Perfect, thank you. And happy to answer any questions about the, the science, the municipal advisory agreement as well. The nice thing is, you know, if we do all the work and then you donate the bonds, we don't get paid, we don't charge an hourly basis, so a lot of people do enjoy that peace of mind. So just wanted to give you an update here, I've been talking to Jenny quite a bit. We've narrowed the scope on what we think might be the best approach as you look at potentially funding some of these capital projects that you've, that we've discussed. And so we've updated our analysis, updated the rates. Unfortunately, rates are going up, but there's nothing that anyone can do about that, really. Maybe if we somehow stop inflation, maybe that would be it. But anyways, wanted to give you an update here, so just as a, next slide, just as a little reminder here, because we are going to go over a few of the different terms, I just specifically wanted to go over general obligation. So that's going to be one of the bonds that we talked about. That bond, as you remember, requires an election, so you would put it on a ballot for a certain amount of money, telling people what the tax impact would be on their home or a certain property value, so they can adjust it to the value of their home. And so that's the general obligation bond. The nice thing is, if you do pass a general obligation bond, it creates a new revenue source for the city. So every budget year, as you're talking about your budget and everything else, you actually submit to the county what the bond payment will be for that year, and they will adjust your property tax bill without truth and taxation to account for that additional payment. So a new revenue source, so it's a nice thing to have. It's actually, if you kind of rank best credits to worst credits of the county, kind of what you can pledge as collateral and so forth, general obligation bonds or GO bonds are at the very top of that list. So typically, that means you get better interest rates, better terms, so on and so forth. But, so just keep that in mind. The other one I just wanted to remind you about is excise tax revenue. Excise tax revenue is, is kind of an all encompassing word. So typically, that means sales tax, franchise tax, energy sales tax. It can include a bunch of different things. For today's discussion, we're talking about an excise tax bond for the city or including your sales tax and your franchise tax as the collateral to repay that bond source. So again, just wanted to give you a little refresher, because that's what we're going to be going over today. Next slide. One other thing that we'll be going over too is I'm going to begin showing you two sets of numbers with each bonding scenario. So we talked about your excise tax bonds, you'll hear me say market deal or direct purchase deal. Just the difference in between that is if you look at this little slide here, one says public markets, which requires you to go through a rating process. The other one says direct purchase, and you can kind of skip around that rating process. So one's a little bit easier, a little bit faster, less headache, I will say. But typically, what you do is you sacrifice a little bit of your interest rate. So you may not get quite as good a rates on that one, but they're going to be cheaper. So the cost issue, so sometimes what we say is depending on the size of your bonds, the term, and a few different things, and we run all this analysis and show you all the options all the way through until you have to make that decision, and we guide you through that process. We, we said which one's more efficient. And actually, even with larger bonds nowadays, the direct purchase, or I may refer to it as DP route, is, has been more efficient than a public market or market transaction. So again, just a little refresher on that as we jump into it. So currently, what I've been given is the list of projects that Harrisville is wanting to finance. These are phase A, phase B, phase C, multiple slides through here that I just wanted to spell it out. So this is the information I was given. And as I talked to Jenny, we said, what's the best way to do this? What's going to be the most efficient way for us to look at issuing these bonds? Because some of these are utility projects, which typically you want to pay for your enterprise funds, such as your water or sewer front fund, stormwater fund, I believe. And other ones are more related, which you typically pay through a sales tax. And other ones are projects that potentially the city could live without. If you didn't get an upgraded park, that's not necessarily going to mean that you can't service people's homes, or you know, that they're not going to have running water, which is, you know, typically the city's main priority is to provide those basic services. And so what we did is we said, okay, let's take the ones that are priority for the city that we know that we want to do, we'll group those together under your sales tax or excise tax bonds. And then the ones that potentially, you know, are more, if we do it great, if the citizens want it, great, we'll pursue it. But if, you know, but we necessarily maybe can't afford it right now with our current budget. So we did those under the GO bonds. So we'd say, let's take the parks, you know, the rec center, those things that are just going to enhance the value of the community, that people may be willing to pay an additional property tax or a higher property tax to enjoy those benefits. Maybe they want to decide and allow them to vote on that. And so we said, okay, let's put those under the GO bond pledge, and then let's put the essential projects that we know the city needs under the sales tax pledge, because excise tax or sales tax bonds do not require a vote of the public. They just require authorization from the city council to move forward with those. So just to point that out. So what I did was we broke those up, and I apologize, I kind of get some of the phases confused, but I think it spells it out in these next slides here on how, what phases. Perfect, so again, excise tax bonds, we said, well, what, what's the total cost of all these projects together for what we deemed essential? So we said, great, we're going to put the city hall offices, police station, public works facility, and then the site work and utilities all into one package. Because typically, people don't get too excited to vote on utilities. Or, you know, a new public works facility, it's not something that really gets people excited when you're selling that to the public. So this price came out to roughly just over $13 million. We said, great, let's look at your historical sales and franchise tax collections, and let's see how this would be able to see if first, we can legally, or I guess, not legally, but on a credit side, be able to issue these bonds. And so we go to the next slide. If, just as a reminder, we're running these 25-year scenarios. Coverage on these on the credit side, so when investor looks at these, they say, we want at least one and a half times coverage on your annual bond payment. So if you have a million dollar bond payment each year, then the combination of your sales and franchise taxes together needs to be at least one and a half million. They want to see that at least one and a half. Now, that's the minimum. We at least, we like to see two times, because that means you usually get better rates and so on and so forth. I mean, similarly, you go apply for a mortgage, right? You have your credit score, the better you can get your coverage and everything else, the more generous banks are going to be as they invest in your bonds. So we ran scenarios to generate proceeds of 13.142 million and change. So these are going to be the scenarios that we show you now. And just as a reminder, here's your historical sales tax revenues. Last year, you generated 1.9, 12 and a half percent increase. That's, that's awesome. I don't know if it's sustainable, but it's awesome. So typically, you'll see these huge bumps if you get like a Walmart or somebody that moves into your area. But I think we're just coming out of this COVID recession, and so there was more money available. And so we saw a lot of people spending money on maybe things that they had held back on. If you notice, like in 2019, maybe that was a little bit lower there. But, so we are running projectives, or projections relatively conservative at three, three percent year-over-year increases in your sales tax base. Franchise tax bonds, these are a little bit different. If you've noticed, this has kind of been all over the place. So we, we just did a, again, a conservative estimate, about 1% year-over-year is probably what it averages out to. And what we do is we take both of those numbers and we add those together, and then that's your coverage factor, right? So that one and a half million needs to be, you know, one times over your bond payment, that scenario. This is what this is getting us to. So next slide. Great, so what I did is if you look at the pledge tax column, this is combining both of those revenue sources together into your excise tax pledge. So what, what that means is when you go to issue bonds, or if you issue bonds under this, you're telling your bondholders that they have security under your sales and franchise tax. So you will make sure to pay them a sufficient amount so that they can receive payment year-over-year on that, up to the entirety of your sales and franchise tax. So if you have a plummeting year, then they would expect you to pay, you know, all of what is available legally to support those bonds. Now, that's why we like to see two times, three times, four times coverage, because that means it's very unlikely that you're ever going to kind of be on the opposite end where you don't have enough money to cover your bond payment. So if you see at the top here, this is a market scenario that we ran. So this would require the city to go through the bonding process, get a rating, probably give you a, a lot more stress than perhaps you want. So we're looking at both right now, but, so the debt service, we anticipate that you would get about $100, $832,000 per year would be the obligation to the city based on current market rates. And so that's how much you would have to pay to be able to raise that 13 million and change in proceeds. So that's a, that's a big debt service. I mean, that's, this is a lot of money. So I don't want you to think in taking this lightly or anything like that. But on the credit side, you look very good. You're over two times covered, you're actually closer to three times coverage. This would be well received, is kind of how we say it in the market if you were to sell these bonds. So I think you need to think of it in two ways. Can we sell the bonds? Would there be investors willing to buy it? Yes, I think you'll see that for both the GO bonds and the excise tax bonds, we could check that box off. The other way is, well, even though legally and credit-wise we can issue these bonds, can we afford to pay this? Are there ways that we can adjust our budgets? Are we going to have enough funds in our, our balances? And I think that's probably more of a discussion, be consideration, but we'll get towards that, kind of towards the end there. But just keep in mind, as we're going through this, always the two sides of the coin. Okay, so again, this looks good, we're, we're running these rates. The DP scenario, a little bit higher, as I mentioned, DP usually sacrificed rates for reduced expenses to issue the bonds. But in this case, you're looking at about $865,000 per year. Again, these are estimates. I think if, you know, given the right environment, we may even be able to do better. But again, if interest rates keep going up, this could be worse. We don't know until we actually go out and test the waters and receive those bids and, you know, bring them to the city council to decide, is, is this something we want to move forward with? Or technically, what we'll do, and I'll explain this process at the end as well, we'll actually adopt a parameters resolution, and I'll explain what all goes with that. It actually streamlines it a little bit. But just keep in mind that these are kind of where it's at right now. So again, even with the higher debt service schedule, you're still over two and a half times on your projected first payment fiscal year 2023. Next slide. So this is, going back to the question, I said, two sides of the coin. So last year in your funds, I believe this is your 2021 audit, on your change in net position after your, if you look at the left, that's going to be your, your general fund. The middle one, I believe, is a combination of your enterprise funds. And then the right column is the combination of your total. I just kind of took an excerpt there, but this is a full page of your audit, so it may be a little bit easier if you, if you want to look at that at some point. But, you know, your change in net position, so the way that we look at it, you know, after your expenses are paid and everything else, your fund balances, everything went up by this amount of money. Well, you know, just kind of a rough way to look at this. I know you can make budget adjustments, and, and there's things that you can maybe increase, decrease this a little bit, kind of immaterially, but you're at about $660,000. Some of those projects, even though we are going to pledge, pledge your sales tax too, so the security will be your excise and your franchise and sales tax, are probably going to be paid from your utility funds, but we're not going to pledge those revenues. So it's going to free those up in case you ever have future bond you need. So those will be free and clear, there's no pledge on it. But you can also transfer money, so if you're paying for a portion of utility pipe out of that $865,000 payment, you'd say, okay, well, X amount percent is actually being supporting our sewer system, so we're going to transfer this amount of money every year to offset a portion of that bond payment from this enterprise fund. And you can adjust those rates to kind of compensate for that as well. But at the end of the day, just again, kind of back to the paper type thing, you're $660,000. So my thought is in this, if you issued those bonds last year, or in fiscal year 2021, when your audit was, you're at $860,000 roughly, you had a $660,000 fund balance. So technically, if you had issued those bonds and had that payment, you would have had a negative $200,000 fund balance. I mean, again, rough math here, I understand there's lots that go into this. But, so that kind of brings you to, to a couple of questions here. Where's the revenue going to come from? I mean, we don't ever want to put you guys in a, a position where you're scrambling, you know, you're having to cut, I mean, the worst thing, having to cut jobs, having to cut positions to try to, you know, find this money. So I think there's a few things you could look at. Obviously, you can't go out and generate more sales tax, you're kind of just beholden to what's being done within your community. But potentially, truth and taxation, to be able to increase a portion of your property tax levy, you could increase that to collect additional revenues year-over-year. That's something in your control that you'd be able to do. But I just kind of did this as, as a little bit of a, you know, let's, let's make sure we understand the full approach, so we don't spin, spin, spin. And then you're like, well, hey, you said we could do, well, legally and credit-wise you can, but internally, you still have to, still have to pay for these things. And we don't want it to come out of, you know, police officer budget or public works budget. You know, we don't want to have to have reductions there to pay for these bonds. But there may be efficiencies in place that I'm unaware of. Maybe there's, you know, costs that are currently going towards these current facilities, or these upgrades may help reduce future costs that could be shared along this payment. So again, this is something we'd work with the city on to make sure that everyone's comfortable if you do decide to move forward with bonding. Next slide. General obligation bonds. Again, this is nice, because if you do go through this process, and it's a bit of a painful process, nobody likes to go say, hey, we're issuing bonds, please, you know, vote yes, so we can raise your taxes. But these are the projects that potentially people would vote for. If they like the rec center, community center, if they really want this park within their community that they can enjoy, they're much more likely to vote for that than potentially a new police station. And so these are the bonds that we put under the GO bonds totaling $5.8 million. Next slide. Again, full faith and credit of the city, so every year you would adjust your property tax, so new revenue source. So unlike what I said about the excise tax bonds, if you pass the GO bond, you don't have to worry about where that money is coming from. It's, it's paid for, every year you will adjust your tax without question to do, generate enough money, and the county auditor will do that through your certified tax rate. Requires voter election, though, so you do have to have 15, 50%, so a majority support in order to get this authorization. Again, we're running this as a 25-year bond. Once this is authorized, if you do pass an election, it's good for up to 10 years. So you have 10 years to issue those bonds that are authorized. Again, I've shown you this slide, but as a reminder, this is currently what your debt current capacity is. If you look at the middle one, 4% for other purposes, you're at roughly about $34 million. You don't have any other GO bonds outstanding. So legally, this is how much you would be able to issue based off of state law. Next slide. Just running some scenarios here, again, market scenario to generate the proceeds amount needed for your projects, this is how much it would impact based off the highest. This is how much it would impact um, based off the highest uh, maximum debt service in the schedule and based off current rates. We're showing that the annual impact on a hundred thousand dollar taxable value. So as you remember, a five thousand, hundred thousand dollar home will be tax adjusted based off the exemption you get. So just assume whatever your taxable value is. Um, we put it in increments of a hundred thousand. So you could quickly get up to the point of whatever your value is would be forty three dollars and forty six cents. So roughly if everyone's around two fifty, you're, you're looking close to about a hundred dollar taxable increase, which comes out to about eight or nine dollars a month, what they would see in adjustment their property tax. Um, that's on a, a primary residential home, uh, business would be obviously not get the exemptions would be higher. Uh, this is on a market scenario. We go to the next one, a direct purchase scenario, a little bit higher, again, just super interest rates. Look, um, with a little bit higher interest rate adjustment there, but there may be some benefits on why you want to do it that way. Uh, next slide. And that's all I have. Short and sweet this time. I, I promise I, I, I felt like you suffered enough through my last presentation. So um, is there any questions about specifically this portion here? Again, we, we just want to get you the information and if you do decide to move forward with it, make sure you guys get the best rates, the best terms. Um, you know, do what really is best for the city and the helping structure in a way that's not going to put a financial burden on the city staff or the city to, to really get out of no hardship. So um, I did send some other documents, but I don't necessarily maybe the timeline for the GO election, if that's worth noting really quick, if we want to get that on their radar. Yeah. So just so you're aware, you do have some deadlines you need to meet if you do decide to move uh, for a GO bond. Um, the, the first deadline and probably the most important one is you just have to adopt a resolution by August twenty fifth. Um, and that would call basically notify, start the process so that you can be on the ballot so that people would have the opportunity to vote for that at the end of the year. But um, just to give you a quick summary on next steps, if you do decide to move forward, um, I, I believe Jenny sent out an email about having a special meeting in two weeks, if that's the desire of the city. And so what that would do, um, if, if you decide to bring us on as municipal advisor and allow science to help in this process, then we would work with the city to go through this process. There's a few professionals we'd need to help the city procure. So working with Jenny, we'd send out RP for bond council, potentially trustee, paying agent, as well as when we get to the point, uh, eventually a purchaser, but making sure at least we have bond council because that meeting, what we'll do is adopt a parameters resolution for your excise tax bonds. Parameters resolution allows you to, to move through the process. So what we do, let's say you're looking at that thirteen million. So roughly what a parameters resolution would say is the city council of Harrisville allows designated or authorized representatives, so typically the city manager as well as the mayor and maybe a couple of other people within the city. Um, the au, the authority to move forward with issuing bonds within the parameters that the city council sets. So we'd set the parameters at fourteen million dollars, a certain interest rate, a certain term. Just gives flexibility um, to them so that they, you know, there are small adjustments. We don't have to go through this. And the reason why we do that, or it sounds like we want to do this quickly is because after that, then we have to notice bonds to be issued and also notice for a public hearing. Um, and that starts a thirty day contest period. So that's always your bottleneck. Until we can get those notice of bonds to be issued out, then um, you're always going to be thirty days behind. But we can do this. Go ahead and have a public hearing, kind of adopt the parameters. And it doesn't force you to do anything, but it allows you to have flexibility. So that if you do decide to move forward, if you're like, okay, we want to, you know, we, we're all in agreeance. We want to go ahead and get this project done, you know, by X date. I don't have to come back to you and say, sorry, we're thirty days behind, but I can say, great, you know, we can meet your deadline and we don't have any legal obstacles we need to work through. So that would be the reason to adopt that parameter sooner if you feel like you want that flexibility to move forward. But um, that's, that's all I have. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I think you covered it very well. And as you can see, we had a very in-depth conversation last week about it. It went over a lot of the different options and we felt like this was probably the best uh, course for the city to follow. Uh, by splitting it between the excise bond and the GO bond, it doesn't maximize what we're asking for. It separates that element, gives, gives the public the opportunity to make the decision about the recreation portion. We also had talked about possibility of the utility bonds. There's, there was some question in our minds as to whether we should be using utility money to pay for uh, things outside of what that money is collected for. So to, to Marcus's point earlier, that we would be pledging the sales tax and franchise tax, but we wouldn't necessarily be paying out of that revenue. We've been making those bond payments, we anticipate our uh, impact fees to be able to help that with that with the potential growth in the future, that we can use some of that or we can pay revenue. We can use that revenue to pay for something else that was covered that would free up the revenue to pay the bond payment. It just, it gives us a, a more, even though it's sales tax, I was pledging that, we felt like it was more uh, staple for us to, to go about it this way. So we is a little bit different than the discussion we had at the work session. And I believe about this was kind of one, one ball for the needs and then one that could be left for the public to make a decision on whether they want this forward, but general obligation.
Investors do not care where you get the money to pay them back from. They, they don't care if you pull it from this fund or that fund, but they just want to know that if for some reason you decide not to pay them, then they can go and say, well, you actually had your sales tax. We have a claim on that. And so that, that's what the pledge means in effect. So.
Thanks. Thank you. I know that was a big discussion last week and that's a lot of work to do to keep it so that we can understand it, right? So any questions, council?
This is all unclear. Our, this resolution relates just to basically hiring space.
Essentially to enter into an agreement for them to give us the, the financial advisement and it would be paid based on what we give in the future.
If the bond is a pass, then they don't, you pay it, right?
So we told you. If you don't issue bonds, we don't get paid. Thank you.
Is it for just this project? Just this bond issuance?
So. So our agreement is for a five year agreement, but it has a thirty day end clause. So if the city ever decides they don't want to use us, it's just a thirty day notice and they can get out of it. We don't, we don't want to, you guys could feel like you're pressured to, to use it. Does that make sense? So we try to make it very flexible. And the reason we have this contract is by SEC and MSRB standards, which govern our work as municipal advisors. We have to have a contract in place to, to give, because technically we act as your fiduciary. And so they want to make sure it's legal, valid and binding. So.
All right. Any further?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Jessica, thanks for asking that.
Any other questions? Right. Not please.
You're all scared. Um, I make a motion that we adopt Harrisville Resolution twenty two eleven, Resolution entering designs public finance. When this will bond service.
A motion is second.
Yes.
Councilor Chad.
Yeah.
Councilor Christensen.
Yes.
Councilor Weiss.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Marcus.
Could I make one comment?
Absolutely.
Just, just again, so we can cover here. It sounds like the plan is to hold that special meeting in two weeks. And so typically, so our agreements are, are, we have to do it because we're under certain laws and regulations. Whenever bond council is brought on, it's deal only or deal specific. And so typically that's just done through a, 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 a quick RFP. There's really only three bond councils in the state. So we, we have templates that would run by your city manager, but in preparation for that meeting to get the parameters done, typically the bond council is, is brought in. So I just want to make sure that that's okay, that, that the council would be okay with Ginny engaging a bond council in preparation for that next meeting as part of the bond issuance. Again, they would be under the same stipulations as I am. If the bonds don't get issued, then people get paid. So it's all right. Well, I don't want to say it's all right. It would be up to your discretion. So I, I just want to make that clear. So there's no surprises or you don't feel like we went around the, the council with, with other professionals on the transaction.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe ten minutes. The meeting in two weeks.
Yes. They may, or they may simply, I'll, I'll be here regardless, but it's, most of the time they'll come as well unless they have a conflict, but we'll have the legal documents and everything. I'll walk through those or they'll be over there. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. All right, moving on. I have six. This is public comments. Uh, this is a chance for anyone in the audience that has something to address before the council comes up. Uh, briefly state your name and you have three minutes to address your question.
I'm Shannon Edwards. Shannon Edwards, um, Harrisville History. And I brought my committee, which and Joyce Larson and Gino Shaw. And then we also have Derry M. Karshner, who was there with me tonight. We just have a couple of things that we need to ask of the city council. Uh, the Weber County Heritage Foundation has arranged for us to be one of the walking tours that are doing throughout the county. And it takes place on, at nine AM on June eighteenth. And um, we have already calendar the cabin. That's where we're going to begin for the parking. And uh, then we want to make sure the maintenance department has the grass that goes down, you know, that along the railroad tracks cut down so walk there. That will be part of our route. And then uh, we are going to be handing out our Harrisville City Historic Site brochures. And we need for the city to print about forty of these for us to be able to give out. And um, and then we also need to make sure that the walking tour uh, is, is published in the city newsletter. And and then the, the biggest problem is we need to find out from the police department, the safest way for people to return. We're going to be going from the cabin down by the railroad tracks up Tugsley, then heading north on North Harrisville Road to the church. Then we'll go up to the light and cross over where the traffic lights to the sidewalk that goes down West Harrisville Road. And then we need to have a safe way to get the people back to the cabin where their cars are parked. And uh, so that's what we really need help with because West Harrisville Road is a road. And it would, it would be nice if they could just trigger the railroad, you know, farms. But that's a problem. That's a problem we need to, need answer in order to keep people safe. So uh, that is important. That's one of the things we would like to do now. And uh, the next thing is um, you know, the uh, Weber County Heritage Foundation has been uh, recognizing those homes that are historic. And they do it with a plaque, but we're very unusual in our city because we have a historic area that is very concentrated. And um, in fact, the homes that will be taking these people past, I think there may be only one that doesn't qualify as historic home. And uh, because they consider anything seventy five years or older as historic. So we had an idea that if we could um, recognize that area or just recognize it with a sign as historic homes. Uh, and I've talked to Scott Rice, Rice, who owns property list across from the north entrance into, into, well, the entrance of North Harrisville Road into the church parking lot. This is prescribed across the street there. And he has a place that would work really nice to put a sign and be approved that he, he approved for us to put it on his property. And the sign would just say Harrisville Historic Homes or something of that sort. And then have a UR code that people could scan and it would open up a website that would give them the year the home was built and who built the home and, and early features that we might have at the home. And then a link from there that would go to, we have a hundred biographies of our early settlers. Uh, and it, it would take them to the information of a person who built the home. And we would have one, an arrow pointing down North Harrisville Road with QR code, one pointing to West Harrisville Road with QR code because there are some historic homes on the Harrisville, West Harrisville Road as well. Uh, so we need to, we would need to have the council support the cost of the sign because we no longer in the budget or, you know, we have no budget for history. We need history money. So, and it would just not be a big sign, but it would be, have to be a nice sign and possibly, probably with our experience in the past have, over the UR code have thing that could be removed and says somebody, in case somebody vandalizes it, you know, that could, we'd only have to read the plastic code with that. That'd be covered over it. Anyway, just an idea. But um, then we also need approval uh, from the city or permission to use Harrisville City to this, the Harrisville Cities site uh, website to store our uh, information on. We, in the past, we, well, the Har, with the County Heritage Foundation agreed to have to store it. What we found in the past when we did our virtual museum, that we have a problem working with Weber State because we get stepped to and they don't have time to do it. And so it's been very hard, but if we could maintain our, if we had permission to maintain the site on the city website, that would be very helpful too. Okay, I'll show my three minutes report. We have one more item. Enjoy Joyce Larson's like to mention that.
Hi, I'm Joyce Larson. I've listened to your proposals, your motions, your high finances, and you're lighting my robe. But tonight, all I'm asking for is one room. I know you're building a wonderful new complex and uh, it should be great. But you know, we have had the most wonderful people in the past that have settled this town, interesting and characters and just wonderful people. And we feel it's important to preserve the past. We think if we have one room with a closet that we can put our artifacts in from these great people from the past, that it would be very beneficial to the city. We feel like activity groups, uh, activity days groups, boy scouts, four H groups, youth groups, people that are interested in history, people who come back to Harrisville and want to see their great grand most big piano. And so we're just asking if you please consider when you're building this new complex, if you can find this one room to dedicate for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to approach?
That was fabulous. That was, that's so much city pride. That's the coolest thing I've ever heard. Um, my name is Madeline Robles. I am the new Weber CTC coordinator. And I don't know if any of you know who, like what that is. So CTC stands for Communities That Care. And we are a substance use and suicide prevention coalition. And we have, we're a big group. We have a group of key leaders. We have a group of community board members. And we have a youth council. They are fantastic. So typically if I'm ever here, I will have them doing the speaking. I just believe that you need to know I exist. So if you do ever receive an email from me, you have at least a slight base to the name, even if it's just that you're a member, I have red hair, it came to this council meeting. Um, but I wanted to make sure that you know I'm on the map. Um, we serve as Weber CTC. Um, we serve Harrisville, North Ogden, Pleasant View, and then up in the valley with Eden, Letherby and Huntsville. Um, and so we've got a pretty big range. And basically what our boundaries are is whoever ends up going to Weber High School, if you're in the boundaries of Weber High School, that's where our name comes from is Weber, from Weber High School, not from the county. Which sometimes confuses everybody. Um, but otherwise I just wanted to kind of be available that if you do have any questions about who we are um, and why I thought it was important that I showed up today, um, or anything like that that I can answer on, but also just letting you know that I am in contact here and really hoping to partner with the city to it sounds, I mean, I've been on the house hunt and I can tell you right now that Harrisville must be a great place to live because there's not ever houses on the market here. So you guys are all doing your job. You're doing great. Um, and so really we're just trying to be here to support and to provide opportunities for our youth and for our families in our area um, to have safe and better, healthy lives. So do you guys have any questions for me or?
What was your name?
Madeline. So I, a lot of times I'm definitely just being called Maddie. And we've, I've got a counterpart named Jenna Flippenz. And we've, I've got a counterpart named Jennifer Lippens. And I have a whole slew of people that work with me. I am employed by United Way Northern Utah. And so that would be where the email would have come from. I can see that in my signature line, but you'll also see Weaver CTC there as well. So, but we would love to get any and all of you involved or have, Mayor Tate has been a wonderful partner. I'm just barely starting, so that's why I'm here. I've only been here since March. And so previously, the person holding my position was Rochelle Crum. So if that name rings a bell, maybe that helps make the connection, but. Okay, awesome. Thank you so much, Rachel.
Thank you. Anyone else? And Madeline, thank you for coming here tonight. It's nice to put a face with the emails.
That's, that's what we're trying to do here.
Jenny, do you want to address what we need to do with the other public comments?
So Steph's just looking for some guidance on, um, walking tour and what type of city sponsorship or involvement or recognition that you would like. So we're conscious of setting precedents and support people that are reaching out, so we just need your guidance on what you'd like us to do, how we'd like us to move forward. One of the discussions that Shannon and I had was we're to locate the plaque and it sounds like she's received permission from private property owner to house that, that sign or plaque. We just need guidance and direction for me to look on how you want us to move forward so that it can be sponsored by the city council. Whatever action we take.
Do you have a cost on the sign?
I, I don't have a cost on the sign. We haven't gotten that far. I did forget to mention though that as far as the IT doing the, you know, we're doing the UR codes and getting, we have, uh, people from River County Heritage Foundation who are willing to, to help with that. We would like it to be, we don't want a great big sign, but one that looks very nice.
Not taken away from Cherokee, but how about a miniature, I mean, nice, nice block with a small bronze plaque. We're gonna do it without making it a piece.
Well, I think it should be a decent sign too, but I don't know. That's open to discussion. I mean, whatever.
Eagle Ground Ridge is that Cherokee would, I think it was $1,300. The foundation took care of half of it.
That's something you would have to decide because we don't have any funds for it. But, but Scott Rice did say he was going to be putting up a new fence along that property and he was really excited. He's like, gonna make this really nice fence. It will look good and having it there, when people come around the corner, at least there is parking room. They can either park at church and walk over to read the sign or, you know, I think, or park in the Cherokee parking area and go back and, uh, and take the picture of the UR code. And you don't have to decide tonight. Uh, we just needed to bring it up to you. And if you want to talk about it, we can have a special meeting and get back if that's necessary. That thing you can do when we're not here. Just don't forget us. Keep us in mind.
One of the things we do need to address whether we want to be, have our walking tour be a city-sponsored event or whether we want that to be on that. Because if it's a city-sponsored event, we have to provide safety and make sure that that's there. If it's not city-sponsored, then she is honored to provide safety for her. Am I understanding that right?
They're actually sponsored by the River County Heritage Foundation. They've been doing walking tours in Riverdale and Ogden. But in those places, they have a crosswalk marked and, uh, we don't have that in order to get that.
Why do you have to go up and around? Are there houses on West Harrisville Road? Can you come back and see what you've got there?
We really need to, uh, go up and around. I mean, it's just not much of a walking tour if you just go back the same way. So it's just a, just say, getting across them. And it's really not that it's sponsored by the city. It's kind of something that the River County Heritage Foundation does. We just didn't want to rely on that. We wanted to get, yeah.
And I, I don't have, uh, helping sponsor. I just got back from South Turnpike, you know, storage area. And the sign was, was a wooden, it doesn't have to be that way, but it was actually came around the corner. It said, this is, this is historic, historically. It was nice.
So would you like them to get maybe some bits for us to work with Shannon? Should you get some bits on what?
It'd be good, yeah, because by the time they're gonna have this, we're, we're.
So we'll be having our special meeting on May 24th. We could add this to that agenda.
Right, but then after that.
Then it will be 2014 with the, uh, so could you put it on the agenda for the May 24th meeting since we're meeting anyway? We can have it as an action items for expanding my.
I'll be pleased for Cherokee, for you as well.
The plaque was split, the Chief Cherokee's plaque, excuse me, was split in half from the, who was it next that provided the? The same foundation and then the city paid the, the other half.
If we could work something out like that for this plaque, that would be great.
Yeah, Matt just said that he could be willing to be as well as a city councilor.
Can I just make one more comment? Walking tour is separate from the, uh, from the sign and the, yes. The walking tour takes place in June, but this is ongoing, you know, it doesn't have to be done right away. So the other could be done later, but walking tour and to help getting across roads, what we, and these other items that I mentioned.
How many people do you anticipate?
They have about 40. I think there were about 100 in August, but that's bigger. I went to Riverdale's number, plus the 40.
There was a meeting, especially meant to gather about how many people and who needs to, uh, help departments, about over 500 people from one to two hours.
And we expect it to last about an hour. That's it. And we aren't going, Riverdale's about three and a half miles, so we're going possibly a mile.
My folks just for a minute. So at the Cherokee, uh, ceremony, there was a guy there named Mike Ackley. And he's got the, but you know, he's got that Western town out west. He does his eagle in August and it's gonna have the Iversons there and it's gonna be, it gets bigger, bigger every year. And he asked, uh, if some of our historians could set up the same table. We had the for Cherokee and to our Harrisville. Yeah, the, and the information and everything. That's gonna be on Saturday, August 27th, at 10 AM.
Maybe we could show you up with that. Is that what they want us to be on, or Chief Cherokee, whether they want it to be on?
Just, just to be there. It's, it's historical stuff for the, the whole Weaver area and just be there to kind of market ourselves.
Okay.
Represent Harrisville.
Like if the Cherokee monument redecoration was, they set up a table there, so more than that.
So although their sign may not have a timeframe on there, we would on our end to make sure it's included in the budget. So we'll probably add this back on the agenda for, for our decisions so that we can accommodate the budget schedule.
Yeah, I think it will be the sign, right, including our budget, yeah.
I also, I also have one.
I second that one.
Just point of clarity, um, we need to make sure that we know that after you walk behind the cabin, it actually changes to private property and Malins own that property. They might want to get permission. They're crossing on to that private property. I just want to make sure, so we don't have a situation because it's not all public property that they're towards going to go on.
So where you built the new gate, that's right, right there.
Going up Chug Lane is Malins for the sign.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you. Okay.
What about the police officer up across the street? I think that's imperative that it be squashed. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Move on to public comments. Mayor, Councilor. The only thing I have on here is another discussion. It's just flash pad. You all saw the flyer that came out in Waterville. Your drought. How do you want to address this?
Personally, I think we need to clearly, I mean, we're, if we have to let the, the grass go around and that, and then weigh that in. Only the tar is a full watch, but.
Okay, here's another thing. We're always thinking of this, but we shouldn't. So then it was another meeting I was at. They were like, okay, so everyone has their own lawns. Where are we going to go reach? What are we gonna do with our kids? So do we, you know, are we gonna be like Arizona and everyone takes out their front lawns and then we have to go to, we provide the park to the city? That how we're gonna look in the future? I'm just throwing that out there too.
This is a one-year thing, right? This year, I mean, but for this year, we can turn it off. My experience over there is the daycare is over there. And we're not even residents of Harrisville. We're putting this, what was the bill last year, seven grand?
It's about seven thousand.
Run the splash.
Annual budget to run it to 7,000.
What's, yeah, what's the monthly evaporate?
We use, including emaver- emaporation toilets and drinking fountains. We run almost four gallons a minute while it's operating during that entire timeframe.
Four gallons a minute?
Yeah.
That's what's lost and replaced.
3.74.
You don't have that headed to that.
Yeah, and we can, we can do it. I'm not, I won't. That's another night. But just so you know, Laten, Laten did a little bit of the research and West Point, Riverdale, Roy, South Island, Farmington, and West Haven are all closing. They're not doing it. North Ogden will be open. Syracuse, Kaysville, and Clearfield are doing adjusted schedules. But when we talked to South Island, their biggest concern was the influx of people that they're gonna get if they, if they borrow them. And you're right, with the daycares plus everybody else's closed. It's, it's literally, it's gonna be a full-time job. We'll do whatever you want, but that's the general consensus. I know most people are closing them besides Marshall, which is a bigger facility. Right, yeah.
And they have their own water. Close it for that year with all the other cities that are doing it. And I think that shows that we are serious about the concern, you know, the water, concerning water. Just like, you know, I, I think that's probably why I got kicked out of, I canceled it. We were talking about the lawns and I said, let them die. You know, we have to make a point. We have, I mean, drinking or lawns, what, what would, what would you rather? Yeah, that's all. And so I think, I think closing it this year, I must see what happens. Next year, it's gonna be wet. But I think with all the backup and ball there, I think it's justified.
The public get access, let's figure it, go eight.
So the direction you want to give to Brian and for the city staff is that we need to, we're not opening it up this year.
For this year.
It's not mean to you, take down the parts that get destroyed because they're already down.
It means we don't put it back.
The chin-up part. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right. Right, Councilor Ross. All right, nothing else I have? I'd like a motion to adjourn, please.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
On favor.
It's a roll call.
That's fine.
I believe this. We all said aye.
I respect that.